Greetings to all gathered here, and I invite us to come together and unite our hearts as we ask the presence of the One who is above all. Great Creator, we come here from various backgrounds and for many reasons. Some of us are chosen, elected as representatives from our areas, not just of our own thoughts, but of our neighbors and those whom we agree and disagree. Appointed because of our skills to see from various perspectives and relate to differing opinions. Volunteers who use their free time to meet, listen, and speak. Community members who wish to share information and learn the changes, growth, and improvements needed in our town. Visitors who may be unaware of our city, but are here to understand. And others who have found time this evening to devote to the city of Watertown. We come here because we care. We want to see improvements. We want to know the city is getting better with newer visions, developments, ideas, and changes. We come here to meet difficulties head-on and to work together to create safe spaces for all residents and others to feel respect, care, and love. It's often hard, especially now, to come together. In a world that challenges us to divide, to hate the enemy, to fight the opposition, and to win. But if there are winners, then there are losers. Competition can breed invigoration that was hidden, but can also breed resentment, negativity, and hatred. No one here is an enemy. No one on the council is an adversary. Yes, opinions may be different as we seek different ways to improve the city. We may view alternate ideas as opposition when in reality it is just a different view. We may feel unheard when decisions do not favor our opinions, but perhaps we must understand that other ideas could work better. This meeting is not about being right or wrong, not about winners and losers, but about coming together for the same common goal, to see the city of Watertown thrive. Let us remember that as we vote. Let us remember that as we listen more than we speak, learn more than we share, seek to understand more than to be understood, and work to find common ground more than to fight in opposition. In a world very divided, may we be the leaders in peacemaking. May we be the standard in community organizing, working together with those who are different, connecting in creativity more than fighting or challenges. May the One who is sacred and goes by many names, or the essence in ourselves that connects to everyone else, lead us in our choices, guide us in our mission, quiet us in our frustration, and work with us in our difficulties. May we be grateful for the leadership of Mayor Emily, who has worked with us and as her term soon ends, has led the city through many challenges and growth in many new ways. May we continue to work well with her and with others who may or may not be at this table soon. May we be grateful for the voices here, the voices before us, and the voices to come. We ask for your guidance, your guards, your compassion, and your mercy through this night and beyond. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Katie. All right. Looks like we're good remotely. With that, it is 7:04, and I'm going to call to order our Tuesday, February 4th coming council meeting. Megan, would you please take the role?
Davis, here. Lampy. Ford.
Here.
Barts. Lanky.
Here.
Smith. Schmidt.
Here.
Wetzel.
Here.
Milden Howard.
Here.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the One of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, founded under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. The first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from January 21st. Anyone have any comments or questions on those? All right, then we have an opportunity for comments from citizens present. Megan, you have anybody? Anyone remotely that would like to comment? All right, we do have another opportunity at the end of our meeting as well. Let's move to reports. You all have the Public Works Commission minutes from January 14th, RDA from January 15th, Park, Rec, and Forestry from January 20th, Town Square Programming Commission from January 22nd, Public Works from January 28th, and the Main Street Task Force from January 28th. Comments or questions from anyone on any of those? Yes, Mr. Milden Howard?
And the minutes from January 14th, I have typed in my name.
We got that one. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Lampy.
I did want to drill down. I think this is the Public Works from January 14th. On the item G, page 6 or so, the minutes noted that the city, well, as the minutes are written, it implies that the city is looking to establish a policy for vegetation control. Was that intended?
That's what I recalled and wrote down as the motion that was presented.
Okay.
Is that not what you heard?
There's two parts that were in there. There was one around, around the ownership.
Yeah, the basic question is who owns the water?
I think my question was, were you all looking for city staff to establish a policy as well to return back to Public Works or not?
My sense is that was the intent of the commission.
Mr. Barts, you have the same recollection? You're the secondor.
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll confirm that with Christine, just to make sure as well. Actually Christine's on, so Christine, make sure, if you would, please just make sure that that was your understanding as well to have a draft policy that can go back to committee.
Yes, will do. Thank you.
Any others then? Yes?
Yes, relating to the C, Park and Rec and Forestry minutes of January 20th, item F. It seems to me like the commission is seeking a way to make it more attractive to possibly be the chair of the commission and separate it from the position of membership on the Plan Commission. At least it appears that's the direction they're going. It's my understanding that the Plan Commission is comprised, and by statute, the chair of the Park and Rec Commission is automatically a member of the Plan Commission. So what they appear to be doing is hoping they can have somebody share in the position of chair of the commission and not have to serve on the Plan Commission, which I think is totally contrary to the state statute. So unless the statutes change, I think what they're looking to do is just not permissible.
Stephen, do you know anything off the cuff or you want to come back to it?
I can give a more thorough response with citations. State statute requires or permits the city to establish the Plan Commission and to dictate how the membership of that Plan Commission is comprised. There is a city ordinance that currently does require that the chair of the Parks and Rec Commission sit on the Plan Commission, but it is a city ordinance, not a state statute that I'm aware of. So I can follow up and double check on that.
Please do that.
And give you a citation for that.
Yes.
Sitting on the Park and Rec Commission, I can provide a little bit more context on that. I think, I think one of the thoughts is that since we have some additional strategic plans that exist in parallel to what we're looking at for, for Park and Rec. For example, we're about to do another strategic plan on all parks again in this upcoming year. We're about to do some other plans that essentially stand by themselves and essentially encapsulate the wishes of the Park and Rec. There's some belief on Park and Rec, including myself, that basically some of those plans can stand independent and can basically communicate to the Plan Commission what's intended for the overall park's plan. Not necessarily something that has to be communicated in the person of the person who happens to chair the Park and Rec Commission and then also serve on Plan Commission.
Any other comments or questions? On any of the reports or minutes? All right. Okay, let's move to communications and recommendations. The first one is just a schedule change for you all. The February 18th council meeting has been moved to February 17th. That's moving it to the Monday before the election. So please just make sure that you make that change in your calendars for that item. I'm going to switch over to you, Andrew. The next item on our agenda is a presentation or a budget update, excuse me, a bridge update. Trying to do too many things at once here. And as I emailed to you all this afternoon, we are having the DOT present this update. It's quite technical in nature and not something that I think is, it is probably something best described and presented by DOT. So Andrew is going to run the slides in just a moment. Do you want me to switch screens back?
My computer's still on two monitors, so I'm trying to
Ah, okay.
Mess with the display setting.
Craig, while Andrew is getting your presentation pulled up here, do you want to just take an opportunity to introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, sure. Thanks Emily. Thanks Council for letting us come over tonight to give this update. My name's Craig Hardy. I'm with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. I'm the project manager overseeing the bridge replacement project there on the Bain Street Bridge. And yeah, we have a presentation for you. I guess Andy or Andrew, when you're ready. I can see it on my screen. I don't know if it's sharing on your screen.
Yep, we're getting it switched over here in the room. It's still doing too?
Yeah.
Okay. Why is it showing up on the screen then? Advance the slide once. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know why that's working.
I will roll it then?
I, yeah, let's. All right, go ahead Craig.
All right, and so yeah, I'm the project manager and then with me today, I guess Andrew, you can go to the next slide. With me today is Jim Ottinger. He's our project development chief. He's on the line as well with us tonight. Next slide. So today, or tonight, I plan to give a kind of a status update where we're at with the bridge, talk about some of the current issues that we have, and then some of the impacts to the project that those issues are causing to us. Next slide. So we've negotiated with the contractor to continue to work throughout the winter time. You've probably seen and heard them going from sunup to sundown out there. With that, they've been able to complete the retaining walls on the east side of the bridge along with the bridge abutment. They've recently removed a majority of the sidewalk where we don't have businesses or residents. And so that sidewalk's been removed. A lot of the backfill has been completed around the bridge abutments. And then about a week and a half ago, the bridge girders were delivered and installed. So that was quite the coordination effort and appreciate all the help that was given for that effort. Can go to the next slide. So I want to talk about some of the current issues. So this is a very unique and complex bridge. We want, the, the bridge design tries to mimic the old bridge that was taken out. It's a, it's an arch bridge. We don't build a lot of those that are not very common, but to go along with the aesthetics of the downtown, an arch bridge is going back in there. And one of the issues that we're running into since the time that the girders were delivered a little over a week ago is the assembly and the fit of the arches that go underneath the bridge. So I want to go through a handful of slides and some pictures to talk about some specific issues that we, that we've run into. So Andrew, if you can go to the next slide. As, as I'm talking through these issues, I'm going to be referencing a few of the major components. And so I wanted to take the time to just kind of explain what these different components are so that as I talk about girders and spandrels and arches, you can see what they are. So the girders are the long ones that span the entire width of the river. They go from one abutment on one side to the other side. The picture that I'm showing here is just half of the bridge. So from the center of the bridge out to the east abutment. So, and then the spandrels, these are the vertical members. So in this picture, we see four spandrels. These connect the, the lower arch to the girder. So there's, there's four spandrels in each quadrant, so 16 total spandrels on, on the bridge. And then there's the arch piece that goes from down in the water on the lower right side of the screen up to the center of the girder where it ties into the keystone portion of the girder. So those are kind of the main components that I'm going to talk about tonight. Next slide. So we're going to talk about the, the connection rod alignment. The, the girder and the spandrel and the arch all connect together. Andrew, I don't know if you're able to kind of hover a mouse over an area. Yeah, so where Andrew's kind of highlighting, there's a huge, a big connecting rod, a bolt of sorts, that goes all the way through the girder, down through the spandrel, and then ties into an anchor that's embedded in the arch. So that's the picture that's on the left. It's, that's a detail from one of our plans. The picture on the right shows one of the issues that we're running into. So as these arches were fabricated, the, the hole through the girder, the hole through the spandrel line up, but they don't line up with the anchor point in the arch. So that's what that red dot is, is kind of showing an offset where that anchor point is versus where it should be in alignment with that dotted line. So I wanted to give you a better representation. If you can go to the next slide. So this is the, the actual components that are out on site now. What we're looking at at the, on the picture on the right, or sorry, on the left, is a view towards the center of the bridge where we have just the, the girder going across the top, and then you can see the arch coming in on the bottom end. The picture on the left is that same picture but zoomed in. The two red lines are the location of where the connecting rod should be going through the girder and then where an anchor point is in the arch. And those, those are off by anywhere from two inches to four inches depending on where at in the, in the bridge we are. So there's, there's many instances of the 16 anchor rods that we have. About two-thirds of them don't line up the way they should. That's the way they were delivered to the site. These are, these are built off-site in a, in a factory and then they're delivered to the project. As, as the contractor assembled them, that's what was discovered for this issue. If we can go to the next slide. The next issue is, is the length of the arch. So the picture I'm showing here is looking at the center of the bridge as though you're down in the river. You're looking dead center of the bridge. The girder is at the top. I highlighted the keystone. The keystone is the, is the little wedge that the anchor, that the arches from each side tie into. So the arches are, two, two of them appear to be fabricated too long. And so they don't fit into that slot in the keystone in the girder the way it should. So the next slide shows a better picture of this. There's a gap. You can see in this picture where the arch meets the girder. There's a gap there, and then the bottom of the arch and the bottom of the keystone don't line up. And this is due, partly due to the, the arch being too long. And so in order to correct that, the arch would have to be shortened a few inches, kind of representing where that red mark is. And then lastly, on the next slide, is the spandrel lengths. So as I mentioned, there's 16 total spandrels, four in each quadrant. Some, as they were delivered to the project, it was discovered that some were, were too short, and there would be a gap in between the arch and the girder and the spandrel. And then other spandrels were, were fabricated too long. And so they won't fit in the space between the arch and the girder. And so as we, as this information became available, available to us, it's not something that all comes out at once. It's as the contractors assembling, they put one arch in, they measure, they realize the spandrels don't line up, and then as they start to see which spandrels do work, then that's when they realize that the, the arch, they're, sorry, the connection rods don't line up. And then, then they're able to discover that the arch is too long. So it's kind of a process that unfolds as they try to do the assembly. It's not something that you can just measure with a tape measure right off the bat until you see it put together. And so a, as these issues unfolded, the contractor presented to us some potential modifications. Some of these included cutting arches to shorten them. Some of the modifications included lengthening the spandrels by using a grout material or a filler that would, that would essentially lengthen the spandrel. Other proposed fixes were to cut the spandrels shorter so they fit into the space that was available. As, as we digested all of these potential modifications that were proposed, we met with the original bridge designer, we met with the statewide department structure experts to talk about what are the short-term and the long-term effects of these modifications. Our bridges are designed to last 75 years or more, and so we need to take not just the short-term but the long-term into account. And as we talked about these modifications, when we cut members to shorten them, we, we impact how much concrete is covering the rebar and then potentially making the rebar more exposed to the elements quicker, which would cause quicker deterioration, rust stains running down the concrete, things of that nature. Where we have grout that is added to say lengthen the spandrels or to plug holes that might have to be drilled in to get better alignments, there's the potential issue for these grout patches to pop out over time. And over the course of, you know, 75 years or the design life of the bridge, that would be a lot of maintenance that has to be done time and time and time again. This highway is what we call a connecting highway. Connecting highways go through municipalities and, and the agreements with the state and the municipalities is that the municipalities cover the maintenance costs on structures and roadways and things like that. So that long-term maintenance over the course of the lifespan of the bridge would then fall to the city to do. So as we weigh these long-term and short-term impacts of these modifications So as we weighed these long-term and short-term impacts of these modifications, we felt it was in our best interest to, to, instead of make modifications, to make new members, that new components that fit the spec requirements of the project. Uh, so once we found this out, we met with, uh, met with the, the city, we met with the mayor, met with the, the public works director to talk about what we discovered, what our thoughts were as far as short-term, long-term effects. Um, and in the end, we want to deliver a quality product to the city. It's going to be a long-term investment and we, we want to do it right the first time. And so with that, there's some impacts to the schedule in order to get it right. So Andrew, if we can go to the next slide. So where, where we sit right now, the contractor is working to get us measurements, exact measurements of, of what we have out there versus what was designed in the plans. So in order to accomplish that, uh, last week, Thursday, they did a three D scan of the bridge. So that way they can get an exact, they can know the exact lengths and dimensions and elevations of all of these components, of the, of the girders, of the arches, of keyways. All those components will now have, uh, will, will know those exact measurements. Then we can compare that to the plans. We can see what needs to happen, what's the next step. We're waiting for the results of that scan. It's, it's a, it's a tedious process. Um, they thought we could have the information by now, so we would know which components need to be refabricated. We should be getting that information anytime now. Um, once we know which components need to be refabricated, here's where the painful part is. It's an approximate four to five week delay to make those new components, get them shipped back out to the site. So with that, it pushes our timeline of opening the bridge. The, the, the next steps of the bridge building can't happen until these components are in place. Um, and so that's, that's kind of a critical pinch point in our schedule. So with this four to five week delay, uh, potentially looking at opening the bridge to traffic, instead of an early spring timeframe, we're talking a mid to late spring, so somewhere in the mid-April timeframe for being open to traffic. Um, we realize that that's a, that's a major inconvenience uh to a lot of the downtown area. Um, but we want to, like I said earlier, we want to make sure we deliver a quality project, a quality bridge, uh, not just something that was haphazardly thrown together and, and uh modified in a way that's going to cause some long-term issues. And so with that, that is kind of our update that we wanted to give. Um, I guess I'll turn it over if there's any, any immediate questions or thoughts on that.
One second. Andrew, do you want to flip back to one of the slides that kind of best shows all the pieces? Mr. Blankey.
I just have a question about the arches and spandrels. Uh, were they made to specification? So was it a manufacturing issue or was it a specification issue?
That's what we're trying to figure out right now with the three D scan that the contractor's taking. Cause once we know those measurements, we can compare that to the specs. And we can know exactly if, if, you know, they, they fabricated it to specs or if they didn't fabricate it to specs. So on- once we have the data from that three D scan, we'll be able to answer that question.
Mr. Muldenhar.
Um.
I'm writing that question down. Make sure we get you an answer.
By ha- by taking that arch and moving that back away from the, the center point, that would line, align that arch up better with the bridge. That would make that fit better. And that way you wouldn't have to take or take anything off of that arch. And that would work that way if the spandrels were the only thing you'd have to replace. And that would be a possibility, right? Without having to take anything off that arch?
Well, the, so the, the impact would be on the opposite end of the arch, that the part that's down in the water. Um, that would, that right now sits up against the face of the bridge abutment. And so that would have to be shortened there. The, it, we, we only have an, a set distance. And if we move it one direction, we're hitting the face of the abutment. If we move it the other direction like it is now, we're hitting that keystone area of the girder.
Right, either that way. Either way, it won't work.
Yeah, correct.
Mr. Hina.
So I appreciate the fact that you're putting a pause on it to determine exactly what the issues are and not just hacking it to try to make it fit. I appreciate that part. Uh, Mike, I have a couple of questions related to the three D scan. You mentioned they had just did that. Was that not part of the original design process to three D scan the original to make sure it part, uh, the design was right? Secondly, on that, one, the blueprint was rendered, was, I'm assuming it was used with a three D CAD or something similar to get the dimensions and the spatial awareness properly designed, so you knew exactly where each bolt hole had to be, each measurement of the uh spandrels had to line up with. And out of the sixteen, how do we not know which ones are right if we have to three D scan to determine if they're right or wrong, if they don't fit? That should be pretty obvious by this, by the blueprints they're using to make them. Sounds like a quality control issue at most.
Yep. So, yeah, let, let me dissect some of those. So the three D scan was done on Thursday. Um, tho- those scans are, are uh very data-heavy. Uh, the, they, not, I don't want to get too technical with a bunch of engineering jargon, but those scans create thousands and thousands of data points for every surface that the scan includes. And so the whole underside of the bridge, it would be scanned for data points. And so the survey team that the contractor has, has to take that scanned data, sift through it, eliminate the points that, that aren't in question here, just to focus on the arches and the spandrels and the girders. So they're in the process of doing that now. They're, they're sifting through all that data that's, uh, taken from the scan to be able to get those measurements. And then they can compare that to what was designed. Uh, as far as our bridge designers go, they, we, we do have a pretty solid blueprint on, on how those were created. Um, they do extensive modeling and, um, a- and checking and rechecking. In fact, we, we had them double and triple check their numbers again just since this issue flared up to see if there were anything wrong in their calculations and their measurements. Um, and nothing, nothing came out of that review. So it, it's now, now we're down to seeing what is, what is correct and what's not. And, and until we have those scanned data, that scanned data, we won't know for sure. I don't know if I caught all of your questions, if that answered all of them.
Partially, yeah. The, the follow-up portion is the, I guess my concern then is the, if the blueprints checked out right and double-checked all the math to make sure on, on a scaling and a modeling perspective, it's correct. This is, this sounds like an execution on the quality control of the actual um creation of the spandrels and the arch and the girder. If they don't line up, that's a quality control issue. With a manufacturer background, if you can't read a blueprint, tolerances, I know there's tolerances built in to allow for certain variance in regards to material and composition and uh shrinking and expansion of material in regards to temperature changes, but those tolerances are extremely tight. You're talking tens of thousands of an inch or thousands, hundreds of thousands of an inch depending on the application. You're talking inches. At no point is quality control going to sign off on it. If they do, that's my issue. Is this costing us another four to five weeks off of something that is a hundred percent preventable? That hurts our businesses and our economy.
A- and that's, that's a concern that we have is, is to understand what quality control did happen. Um, yeah, we, we believe this is a manufacturing issue, um, un- until we have the data. We're, we're anticipating that's what that is at this point. Um, yeah, we, until we have the data, we can't know for certain. But yes, quality control should be implemented at all steps of the, of the construction, of the fabrication process. The state does a quality verification aspect of it. And, and that was part of the, what started to flag some of these issues was a- as these members are delivered out to site, our inspectors are reviewing them, measuring them, comparing them against the plans and seeing, hey, there might be some discrepancies here. And, and so that's kind of what starts this is, that's what started a lot of this was the quality verification that the state inspectors do as the pieces are being delivered.
So with that, are these pieces delivered from in-state or out-of-state?
Uh, they're fabricated in-state. Uh, I believe it's up near the Manitowoc area, I believe.
Okay, so my question is this then. Um, because this is extremely cost and labor intensive for all parties involved, would it not be more efficient, effective, and better for everybody if the inspector inspected it onsite at the manufacturer before getting loaded up and trucked and trucked halfway across the state? To avoid these issues, because now they're here, they're, they're mocked in place, they're wrong. Now they're going to get pulled back out, get shipped back up, and new ones shipped back down, adding to the increased cost on everybody. And delaying the process exponentially more. So this is an efficiency thing as a lessons learned on the back end of ways to improve the process moving forward.
Sure. Yep. Um, you know, the, as far as the quality control goes of, of the manufacturing of these particular components, um, the, the way our process is set up is that the contractor's over there quality control. And so how they, if they choose to dry-fit those at the manufacturing plant or if they choose to have them paid to deliver it onsite and then check, that, that's up to their means and methods of how they choose to do that. Um, so we, we don't have a lot of say over how they choose to do that quality control check on their end.
But we have control over the state. The state has control over their inspectors. That's what I was getting at. I know the contractors also based on how the contract is written in each individual contract, it's going to have slightly variation with regards to the contractor and the contract office representative and the, the representative of the state. I'm talking from the state inspector standpoint, because you mentioned there's a state inspector as part of this process. Why, why don't they have that process at the front end instead of the back end from a state perspective, not a contractor perspective? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I guess I don't, I don't have a good answer for you tonight on that. Um, that's a, that's a pretty big uh process and procedure that we'd have to dive into further at the statewide level, not at the project level. But that's definitely something that should be talked about more potentially.
Yeah, I think it's probably something that can get put on the regular agenda for us to have a discussion about. It seems at this point that it would be in the best interest of everyone to have that adaptation be made at this point in this project in particular. Um, so maybe it's something we can discuss tomorrow. Tomorrow, right? Yeah. Others. Mr. Board.
So Craig, I have a question for you. Are all these parts were manufactured in the same plant?
Yes, that's my understanding.
You're telling me that they were not dry-fit in the plant before they were shipped. You also indicated this is a structure that you don't regularly build anymore. Wouldn't you have required them to be dry-fit in the plant before they were shipped?
Um, you know, I, I can't get into why something was or wasn't done. Uh, that, that's, that doesn't really solve any of our issues going forward for this project right now. Um, as far as should it have been dry-fit, I, I leave that up to the contractor. That's their means and methods. We, we leave a lot of that control up to the contractor to determine when they want to dry-fit it. So if their manufacturer wants to dry-fit it at their site, that, that is their complete prerogative. If they want to dry-fit it on the project site, that's their prerogative as well.
So what you're telling us is that since you left that prerogative with the contractor, it's now the contractor's cost to fix the problem.
If it doesn't meet the spec requirements, you are correct.
It's pretty obvious it doesn't meet the spec requirements, right?
And until we know the measurements, that, that's what it appears to be, yes.
Other questions, comments? Yes.
So Craig, I understand you're the project manager, correct?
Yes.
So I'm assuming then that the contract office representative is a different individual? And the contract officer is a different individual?
We hire a third-party consultant. We are inspectors.
Okay, so this seems like a failure on the contract officer to properly formulate a contract based on the needs that the city put forth and the design of the bridge, knowing it was going to be a unique position, knowing by your own admission that it's not a cookie cutter bridge that we do. And that's not your words, that's mine. Um, so this tells me that the contract office representative could have done a better job in regards to monitoring this, and the contract officer should have done a much better job at ensuring that the criteria of the contract, including test fitting, as Alderboard pointed out, should have been handled. I understand as a project manager, these are outside of your scope, but these are things that you can put in your lessons learned to put forth to your superiors and to the contract officing department to ensure that this doesn't happen again because um you two may be isolated from this cost, but our community and our residents are not. And we're going to bear the brunt of this because of an oversight of an administrator in a different part of the state. So lessons learned.
Yeah, let, let me, let me maybe uh step in here, Craig. So the, the department handles a lot of projects across the state. So, uh, yes, it, you know, in this particular case, it, um, it, it, it seems like the contractor, uh, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to verify what happened out there. But this, this is a resource thing for the department too. We, we really don't have enough people to visit and ensure that the contractor is, is meeting the plan specifications. And Craig kind of alluded to that, how, how we handle that. We, we put a lot of that quality control uh, on the contractor to ensure that it comes to the site correctly. And that has a lot to do with the resource. We, we just don't have enough people at the department to monitor every step of the way. And we, we do rely on the expertise of our bridge contractors to be able to do uh something like we're talking about. Um, fitting this, fitting this together, an aesthetic feature. And so I just want to throw that in there, that, that, you know, it, you, you can make a comment that, that was something that was oversight on our part. But uh i- in general, uh, the contractors do have this expertise to get this right.
No, Jim, I, what I was getting at is that this falls not to you two, because it sounds like you two are on top of this, trying to fix it and do the best you can within the scope of the power that you have. My point is that this falls to the contracting officer and the contract officer representative, which you said is contracted out to a third party. Part of the responsibility of a contract officer representative is to ensure that these things are caught ahead of time while the contract is being executed. Not at the time of delivery, which is where we're at now. That doesn't fall to you two. That falls to the contract office representative as an agent of the contracting officer. And if it's contracted out, they have the time and personnel because that's their sole job is to do that. So this is a side, this is a side effect of them not working properly in their scope.
I, I'm going to jump in real quick. Uh, this is not a fault of the inspectors that we hired. Uh, they have done a remarkable job on this project, trying to keep, keep things in track and in line and, and performing the jobs that they've been hired to do. Um, the, the, this is not a, this is not their fault. This is not a lack of inspection on their part. They are hired to inspect and do, provide the quality verification as the project is constructed. But there's no other requirements that they're faulting on a- as, as is being explained, that, that they should have been doing this or should have been doing that. They have been doing what they've been hired to do, which is contract verification as the contractor is building it.
I don't, I don't want to speak out of school, but I'm, I want to try to interpret between the two and Craig or Jim jump in at any point if I'm incorrect. I think from my understanding of working with the department, the contracts come from the department. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I think what, I think what you're saying, Alder Schmidt, is that the contract should have been written in such a way that because it's a nuanced bridge, these types of things should have been subject to additional inspection in, in, in ways that would be applicable to the uniqueness of this bridge. And that should have been in the contract?
Yeah, so that's part of it. So it should be in the contract. And I'm not, I'm not digging on the inspectors. That's not, I'm not talking about the inspectors. It's the contract officer representative, which is not an inspector. That's, their job is simply to manage the contract administratively, not actually physically inspect the, the construction of the bridge. That falls to inspectors. So it's, it's a side effect of dealing with contracts. And I all know this because I've got a lot of experience dealing with them. So it sounds like the inspectors are doing everything within the scope of their job and the capabilities they have across the state because they have many projects they're inspecting. And it sounds like the department is doing everything in their scope of power based on the workload they have, the number of personnel, to make sure these things don't happen. And they're relying on the expertise of the contractors to do what they're paid to do.
Yeah, I think, uh,
And that's what you're working on.
Yeah, I think, uh, the aesthetic components and aspects of this, I, I think this is something that going forward, I think was mentioned by somebody on the council, that, uh, it's a learning thing for us. And going forward, I, I can see where we've got aesthetic features similar to the arch and spandrels that are on the Main Street Bridge here, that. It is something that we're gonna have to look closer at, so I, I do recognize the comment i- as being, yeah, it, it's a learning thing for us, and we'll have to monitor that. Closer on future projects, and I know, uh, uh, once the determination, uh, for sure these pieces need to be refabricated. That, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna keep a closer eye on it and make sure this doesn't happen again, so we're not gonna go through this a second time. So ju- just to make the comment that we understood that, uh, there are certain features about this that are not typical for us. And, uh, you know, we, in the future, we'll probably have to keep a better eye on that, so just to recognize that, that is, that is a, a good comment.
So Jim, please don't take this the wrong way, but our businesses on Main Street are paying for your education, so thank you very much. You're already six months late. So your education has been extremely costly to the businesses that exist in Watertown.
Understood.
Anyone else that has a question? Yes, sir.
Now, um, we're waiting for the arch and for the spandrels to be re-manufactured. Now, can the rest of the bridge be, can that continue, the rest of the work on the bridge continue?
Hey Craig, before you answer that, can you wrap in, I had asked the question about, uh, you know, if it's aesthetic, just continuing and putting these up after? And you had shared the sequencing of sidewalk, I, I think that all kind of wraps in if you wanna include that.
Sure, yep. So tha- that is a good question, that is one of the things that we looked at as a team, as, as a potential. You know, how, how can we keep this going as, how, how can we get the bridge construction to continue while we work through this issue? Um, these, these components, the arch and the spandrels, they aren't structural components. They're, they're not there to support the weight of the bridge and the traffic going over the bridge. They're, they're there to provide the aesthetic look that, that has been the goal of, one of the goals of this bridge. And so we looked at what could, what options could we do in order to build the bridge, keep the construction going? While we work through these, uh, re-manufacturing issues. And so the, the picture that Andrew shows here on the screen, um, I, I can kind of talk through a little bit. So the girder, the top of the girder, on top of that, we pour the, what's called the bridge deck, so that's the part that the cars actually drive on. And then on top of the bridge deck on each side is where the sidewalk would be. And so these connection rods are underneath the sidewalk embedded in the bridge deck. Um, and so we looked at, is there a way that we can reverse the sequence, can we do something different? Um, we looked at the potential of, instead of having an anchor at the top of the arch, could we drill a hole all the way through the arch? Uh, and then that way we can put a connecting rod all the way through the arch and connect it from the bottom, instead of connecting it from the top through the girder. That was something we looked at. In order to do that, it would require drilling not just one single hole through the arch. It would also require drilling a pocket of, I don't know the exact dimension, maybe a four-inch or a six-inch square pocket on the bottom side of the arch. So that way they can embed a, a steel plate that would have a bolt hole through it with a, with a bolt attachment on it. Which would then have to be grouted in and create like a concrete plug of sorts on the bottom side of the arch. That was one of those long-term maintenance things that we talked about. Could, if we, if we did a different sequence in order to keep the bridge construction going? It would require more of these types of modifications of drilling all the way through the arch, drilling a pocket on the bottom side of the arch. Plugging that pocket with an epoxy grout afterwards. And then the long-term maintenance as those plugs get weathered and crack and shrink with the different weather conditions. So we, we did look at, at all the avenues we could come up with of how to keep the bridge construction going. But all of them required additional modifications leading to long-term maintenance problems. And so for that, we, we went away from any of those modifications to build it right the way it was intended the first time.
So to answer the question, will there be a point in time where the work stops until these are re-manufactured, I think is what you're asking?
Y- yeah, so they, they are pretty much at a stop now. Um, they, they did the scan on Thursday, uh, the bridge crews have not worked, um, Monday and Tuesday this week, so. They are kind of at a stop until those new members are fabricated.
So they won't pour the deck?
But I mean, the deckwork is all finished on top already?
No, no.
That was supposed to be this week?
Yeah, it was supposed to be this week, yeah, I believe so, if I remember correctly.
Like late this week and early next week, I think it was supposed to be for, but they won't, they won't be pouring the deck.
I know that, okay.
Craig or Jim, can you guys speak to, uh, last time we had a conversation like this, there was a conversation around damages? Could, could you share what is, you know, what, what the impact is, uh, in that way?
Yeah, so when, when we negotiated the winter work with the contractor, one of the things that we did was. We took the original liquidated damages that was assigned to the contract in the beginning. I believe in the beginning, it was somewhere in the tune of five hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars a day. Any day that the, that the contract ran late. Uh, when we renegotiated to have them work through the winter, we upped that liquidated damage to five thousand dollars a day. Any day after March first, that they don't have it open to traffic. And so that is the current status of the contract right now, is, is contractors obligated to meet a March first date? With a five thousand dollars a day liquidated damages. Um, so that, that, that is in place now, um, so as we're talking about this mid-April delay. That's ev- every day after March first is a five thousand dollar liquidated damage to the contractor.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for Craig or Jim? Yes.
Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, look at a slightly different part of the bridge. Is there any risk at all to the girder itself?
Uh, so the, the two outside girders, which we call the fascia girders, they have the keystone that the arches tie into. Uh, we have, we have asked for the measurements on that as well, so that way we know if the holes that go through the. Uh, fascia girder are in the correct location, or if the, uh, where the arch ties in, that picture that Andrew shows, the, the left side of that picture. If, if that wedge is in the correct location. So that, that is also being analyzed as part of that three-D scan. The, the main girders through the center of the bridge that carry the weight of the traffic, that, that are the main structure supports. Those appear to be right where they should be, no issues have been identified with those at this point.
Thank you.
Craig, while I give everyone a chance to think if they have any last comments or questions, um, if they took the scan on Thursday. It was my understanding we were planning on having that at least by today, that didn't happen. So this is a repetitive thing with ETI, a promised deadline that comes and goes. What, what is the department's plan to make it, make sure we get the results tomorrow?
Um, the unfortunate part of how our contracts are written is we're at the contractor's mercy on these types of things. We, we've, we have followed up every day, multiple times a day, asking when the information's available. Uh, to tr- to try to be the squeaky wheel, if you would. Um, they, they have, th- this is their part that's in their control at this point. And so, um, right now I don't have another, a different mechanism to have them deliver this information quicker to us. Um, based on what, how our contracts are written. It's a, it's a very unique issue that doesn't happen every day. So we're all kind of in uncharted territories.
Well, I'll, I'll reach out to Jason. I spoke with him ironically very shortly before this problem occurred. Um, and see, you know, see what he can provide us in the way of pushing those results over to you all. Every day this day is, uh, stagnant is another day, our business, our community and our residents and our visitors are impacted. And if you guys don't have a contractual way to do so, uh, I sure don't either, but I do have a voice and I can be quite persistent. Um, so we'll reach out to them tomorrow and see if we can move the needle. I, I don't know what it takes to do a three-D scan, but I know that we've been waiting for it for, for at least a day, because I was told we were gonna have it today. So I'll, I'll see if that, if, uh, he provides any additional insight. Any last comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Smith?
On the issue of the liquidated damages, it appears you renegotiated the liquidated damages. And that it was increased from twenty-five hundred to five thousand per day after March first. But that, that agreement or the contract is with the contractor, correct?
Correct.
But it is the anticipated likelihood that the delay here is being caused by a manufacturing issue? Over which seemingly the contractor would not be the responsible party, is that safe to say?
The, the manufacturer is a subcontractor to the contractor, so it, it does fall under, you know, we, we, we will. The, the, the prime contractor, Xenotech, when we have delays like this and we have liquidated damages assessed. The prime contractor is assess those liquidated damages. And then if they see that it's a fault of a sub, then they have their contracts with their subs that they can then pass on the liquidated damages, if that's the case. Uh, that, that's really the contract between the prime contractor and their subcontractor.
Okay. Then it sounds to me like the issue of liquidated damages would come into play for all of the delay. Who will be the beneficiary of the liquidated damages when the overrun is finally determined?
Yeah, so, so as far as the liquidated damages goes, those are to cover the costs, um, associated with. The additional traffic control that the state has to pay for, the, the additional inspection time that the state has to pay for. The, the added, um, costs like that that are included, i- it's an administrative assessment? To help recover the costs that the department is spending to. Handle those delays.
Okay, well, it seems to me like the likelihood is that the state is going to. Use those liquidated damages to offset some degree of additional expenses and oversight and things of that type. But from my perspective, the real losers on this delay? Are the citizens of Watertown and the businesses that are in proximity to the bridge that remains closed. Do you think that there is any fairness in assigning some percentage of these liquidated damages? To those who are truly suffering on an ongoing basis? And the whole point of all these extraordinary efforts to overcome the earlier delays? And to keep the construction project going through the winter months, accelerated hours, et cetera? Is to alleviate the very harm that is being extended by an additional five or six weeks. So whether it's doubled liquidated damages or the original amount? The point is, the real harm is accruing to these businesses? Some of which are just barely hanging on, and this additional delay is going to be a dreadful consequence. So it would seem to me that on a basis of the assessment of harm? How can you compare some marginal additional cost that the state is going to be suffering? As a result of this delay, to the point where they're intending to assess and keep? These liquidated damages for their own offset? While the citizens of Watertown, and especially the nearby businesses, are suffering catastrophic harm? The original delay was just dreadful news. And now, basically what these folks are looking at is another month and a half. And if that's the prediction, it's probably a pretty good probability that that's gonna be underestimated. And time just continues to tick to the detriment, especially of businesses holding on by their fingernails. And I'm saying, is there not a sense that that's the real harm? And the real fairness in this process of moving forward is to allocate this? These liquidated damages for the benefit of those who suffer absolutely catastrophic harm?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this one here, Craig. So the DOT does not have a mechanism to do what you're saying here. Uh, this is one project, uh, the team is implementing, um, the DOT policy and procedure the way it is. And that, that's about all I can tell you on that, is, uh, thi- this is what the policy is. And, um, I, there is no mechanism to, to, uh, take a portion or all of, or any of it, uh, to the businesses. So I, I, that, that's all I can really tell you on that.
No mechanism in place, uh, except the issue of justice in the final outcome. And basically what I'm hearing is that regardless whose fault, all of these delays are attributed to. Basically, the loser in every single incident is the city, its citizens, and its businesses. And we're left with the argument that there's no mechanism in place to further justice? And promote an equitable settlement, that these businesses, some of whom are having a very difficult time? Are at least partially made whole. So I think that's a very sad state of affairs, that we're relying on the notion that there is no mechanism in place. I think justice suggests that we find a mechanism and that we further justice to the. Fullest extent of making those who have suffered this dreadful wrong as whole as can be possible.
Mr. Smith? Um, this is an, this is a request for information. I don't expect an answer tonight from either one of you gentlemen. Um, but I do request this be provided to Andrew and the meeting with the mayor. Is I wanna know who the contracting officer was who signed off on the contract? Who the contract officer representative, who has been managing the contract administratively, along with a copy of the contract provided to the city for our review? So we can see in black and white, the original contract and every modification and amendment has made to that contract since it's been inceptioned. So we can see in black and white what the legal statute is, what is legally have done, and who has a statutory authority to modify this contract. And it sounds like as it sits now, what it says determines where those funds go to. And I understand we cannot modify a contract. And I understand we cannot modify a contract from our end, but we can find out who, who can and what the process is to do that, request the modification be done. Whether that happens or not, I don't know. But you can provide us that information and it is our right to know these informations.
Jotted that down. We'll make sure that we get an answer to that. It's not our answer to provide, but I'll harp on it until we get the answer. Any last thoughts, comments, questions? Okay, uh, Craig, Jim, thank you, uh, for joining us this evening. Uh, we have a few items, uh, that we can touch based on at our regular meeting, uh, tomorrow. Um, and we'll make sure now that we have a final slide deck of information here, we'll get that information, um, to the main street program. Andrew, can you make sure we share that with them? Um, and, um, and then we meet with them every Wednesday. Um, I, I will provide updates as soon as we know something, something new as a result of whenever the scan results are finally available to the department. Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Um, let's go back to our agenda. Uh, next item is miscellaneous business. You have the payroll summary from January eighth to January twelfth. Mr. Stevens, do you have something for us?
Yes. Um, Mr. Blankie had, uh, brought to my attention that the, uh, transfer of a form to your packet uh, didn't show some of the information that's on it. So the overtime costs this pay period for the police should be twelve thousand nine sixty-eight seventy-eight with a column total of twenty-seven eight twenty-one. If you'd like a copy of it, I have the paper in front of me. And then just a citation, the correction of the front and to date on the agenda, it should be through January twenty-one and not twelve.
All right, questions for Mark on that one? Yeah?
Just that it gets added into the, uh, for the updated online packet, so it's in there for public record.
Megan, will you, do you normally take care of that one? One of you will. All right. Any other comments or questions on that item? All right, then let's move to ordinances. Uh, the first is ordinance twenty-five dash zero one. This is to adopt the planned development, general development plan under section five fifty dash one fifty-two for area CB. Um, this is here from me and the planning commission on its second reading. Ms. Davis?
I'll move forward, ordinance twenty-five dash oh one.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion by Davis, second by Mr. Lampy. Questions, comments? Megan?
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhour?
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, very good. Next is ordinance twenty-five dash zero two. This is to amend the city code to reflect departmental changes. This is here from Public Works and Mr. Board on its second reading.
I will move for twenty-five oh two.
Motion by Board, second by Barts. Comments, questions? Megan? Ward?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mildenhour?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero. Very good. All right, before we move to resolutions, I just wanna make mention cause there's some people online and some in the room. We are going to go into closed session. So in just a moment, when we go to closed session, I'll ask you to step out. And for those of you attending remotely, I will do my best to move Christine and Rich. Is that it? Just Christine and Rich into a breakout room? So we'll take a motion to go to closed session. We will have discussion. We will come back into open session and take action on one item, have comments from citizens present, and then adjourn. So, um, with that, could I please have a motion to go to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, print one, print G? This is to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning a strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This retains to the Riverside Park bathroom. Is there such a motion? Oh. Motion by Mr. Mildenhour, second. Mr. Wetzel was your, I think I saw all of you. Second by Mr. Wetzel?
Sir.
Like the entire row went up at once. Megan, will you please take the roll?
Mildenhour?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Thank you, Chris. All right. All right, everybody, we're back in open session. Our next item is exhibit 97 oh four. This is a resolution to terminate contract eight dash 24 Riverside Park restroom. Uh, this is here from Mr. Board and Public Works. Motion by Mr. Schmidt, second by Ms. Davis. Questions, comments, discussion? Megan.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel. Mildenhauer.
Aye.
Davis. Lampy. Board.
Aye.
Barts. Blenke. Smith. Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, Megan. All right, we're another, we're at the last opportunity tonight for comments from citizens present. Megan.
Becky Kiefer.
Oh, she left. She's not out in the hallway with you anymore, is she? Could you just make sure, I'll take that because I, right, I'll just make sure we get back to her. I know she had, seemed like she had questions during the bridge. Okay, so, I'll either take a copy of that or you can email it to me. We'll make sure we get back in touch with her. Anyone remotely that would like to comment? All right, seeing no other business, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Mildenhauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.